The legislature is back in session. We suspended discussion on Senator Rodriguez's bill. Now I'm lost as to the number. Yeah, that threw me off. All right, we're on 339, Senator Rodriguez's bill. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have several amendments to make. The first one, Mr. Speaker, on the floor amendment that was passed out, it says, "Floor Amendment Changes to Bill 137." That should be corrected to Bill 339.
Okay.
And this is on page 31, starting on line 18.
31 to 34.
The first one is on page 31. Okay, it says, "The commission shall consist of eighteen." We're changing it from originally the 14th, and we amended it further to 17th, and now this is the final amendment to, of course, if there's anyone else that wishes to make that change, but eighteen members, of which seventeen members are appointed by the governor, who shall serve at his pleasure from each of the following organization or groups. And to add, of the eighteen members, eleven are voting members and seven are non-voting members. And if you go down from item one, sub-item one to 16, it would show which of those are voting and non-voting members that I'm proposing on this amendment, Mr. Speaker.
It was the earlier one. All right, on the first Rodriguez amendment, any senators wish to be heard on that? Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the author of the amendments, the authors of the amendments may have already taken this into consideration, but after quickly looking at the composition of the commission, and after subtracting those who are non-voting, we end up with 12 voting members. And my experience on any kind of commission board council is that if there are going to be voting responsibilities, and I'm not saying that there will be any contention on this council or commission, but there might be, it might be suggested that we have an uneven number of voting members. Okay, thank you. I don't find the seventh one, but I believe I'm right.
You still have the floor. Do you want to ask another question? All right. Any other senators wish to be heard on the first Rodriguez amendment? We'll move to 344.
from pediatrician." Just like to correct that and state, "One representative who is a pediatrician with unlimited medical license to practice within the territory of Guam."
On that Rodriguez amendment relative to pediatrician, any objection or does anybody wish to be heard?
No objection.
On number 15, it says, "Appropriate joint region of Marianas authority shall be requested to designate one," and I'd like to add EMS representative, we're adding EMS in front of representative.
On the EMS amendment?
And that's all for that amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Do you have another amendment?
Yes.
Please.
Okay.
There was no objection. Was there an objection?
No. The second amendment, Mr. Speaker, again, the top, should be labeled Bill 339 on floor amendments. And this is starting on page 34, starting on line 18. This, I'll read what it says here. "The Guam Community College School of Allied Health, Guam Fire Department, University of Guam, approved by the DPHS Office of EMS," and what I wanted to add is, "and other EMS." What I'd like to do, Mr. Speaker, I was corrected here by the co-sponsor of this amendment, is to, right after the University of Guam, to add, "and other EMS training service providers approved," and then continue the "approved" by the DPHSS Office of EMS, and then continue with "shall provide," and so on and so forth. Yes, for one and two.
On the, on this amendment, does everybody have a copy of it?
Yes.
Anybody wish to be heard on that amendment?
A final amendment, technical amendment, Mr. Speaker, is if I can request the legal counsel to amend, to change out where, in the legislation where it refers to the territory of Guam, to replace it with island, of Guam, replace territory with island?
It should just read just Guam.
Or just Guam. So just to amend that.
All right, so all references to territorial shall now be Guam. Any objection to that? Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Actually, all of those amendments took care of the amendments, the concerns that I had in the front end. And if I can get, I do have a question with regards to, I'm going to jump all the way back to page 66.
Please.
Page 66, line five, basically establishes or provides $200,000, and we're changing out the fund, that appropriation was to the Guam Memorial Hospital, now to the Guam Office of EMS for the specific use for the establishment of the Division of EMS. But if you go further, I mean, go earlier back into the bill, the Division of EMS is under the Guam Memorial Hospital authority. Now, my question is to the author, we're giving the money, taking the money away from the Guam Memorial Hospital, giving it to an office under the public health to establish an office back in the hospital. Is that going to pose an issue?
Senator Rodriguez, if you're willing to yield.
Yes, and, no, I don't believe it does, Mr. Speaker, but if I can request a 30-second or one-minute recess just to speak to the senator. I'm sorry about that.
Your response.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, the Division of EMS is established within the hospital, within Guam Memorial Hospital. However, the administrating office of EMS is with public health. And so, as my understanding is, that division at the hospital has, you know, doesn't even have a staff member assigned to that division. And so what we're saying now is that the administrating office now take, make use of that revenue that is, was initially being appropriated to GMH.
Senator Blas, is that satisfactory? Do you have follow-up?
Yes, the Division of EMS is established within the hospital, within Guam Memorial Hospital. However, the administrating office of EMS is with public health. And so, as my understanding is, that division at the hospital has, you know, doesn't even have a staff member assigned to that division. And so what we're saying now is that the administrating office now take, make use of that revenue that is, was initially being appropriated to GMH.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 344-31COR be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it briefly.
Thank you. Any objection?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 344 is fairly simple with regards to its intent and why we're doing it. When we were discussing, of course, the floating of the bond to pay for the income tax refund bonds, we were trying to achieve a level of borrowing that would have satisfied the need to borrow for the payment of refunds plus other obligations that this body had decided it wanted to do. And that amount, it was an amount, Mr. Speaker, and that amount was basically about $240 million. And we achieved that amount of borrowing by the inclusion of the Chamorral Land Trust property, because as you know, property, the value of the property is what sets our debt ceiling. So it is what is placed on the tax rolls and what is assessed, and then 90% of that is, we can borrow up to 10% of the 90% of the assessed value. And so without the Chamorral Land Trust, we had calculated that the borrowing would be around $200 million. With the inclusion of the Chamorral Land Trust and after paying off of some additional borrowing, principal payments for bonds, the calculation came to about $240 million. And so the body went ahead and worked with a compromise that was decided by this body and what the administration had agreed to during the deliberation of the committee of the whole was, 240 is the number we were looking at, and we are achieving that by putting Chamorral Land Trust property on the tax rolls. Now, there was some discussion, of course, on that, Mr. Speaker, but the bottom line is that during those discussions, we also found out that the property has to be placed on the tax roll, the property has to be assessed, and a tax bill has to be attached to that property in order to be counted towards the debt ceiling. And so in the discussion of the Chamorral Land Trust, we find that the properties of the Chamorral Land Trust are still being worked on with regards to putting the property on the roll and sending out the tax bills. And in effect, we had to tie every single Chamorral Land Trust, let's see, to a lot, to a map that is on the tax rolls and registered at the Department of Land Management. And so this is going to take some time, of course, and so forth. In addition, we also changed the assessment of a fee on the Chamorral Land Trust from a payment in lieu of tax. a payment in lieu of taxes, which this is the same as a real estate tax, to a straight-out real estate tax. And so, based on some of the problems and some of the concerns that were raised was on the two matters of, one, we may not be able to certify $240 million because the Chamorral Land Trust's properties have to all be reconciled with the leases and the maps. Second, is that changing the Chamorral Land Trust's legislation from its original enactment, I believe, and I hope my colleagues will agree to this, that it will present opportunities for new challenges to the constitutionality of the Chamorral Land Trust from a set of statutes that has been litigated before and has been declared constitutional. So, this bill will reverse the action of the body with regards to the placement of the Chamorral Land Trust on the tax rolls for the purpose of achieving a $240 million borrowing and reverse the payment in lieu of taxes and making it a straight tax on the original legislation of the enactment of the Chamorral Land Trust. What it does preserve, Mr. Speaker, is what this body has agreed to, which is to allow borrowing of up to $240 million. And the way it does that is that we took now what was the debt limit calculated at 90 percent of the assessed value to now 93 percent of the assessed value. And so, what this achieves is we now have a clean set of tax rolls with what has been certified in the past and what has been calculated to be truly able to be certified without any question by the Board of Equalization, which is all of the properties that have been certified over the many, many years, every single year we certify. So, these are the same properties plus any new additions to that tax base of assessment of property. And so, that is maintained, it's easy to certify, there's no question, and we will achieve a certain level of borrowing from that tax roll. But when you do that, you need, we needed to increase the assessment from 90 to 93 to ensure that the amount will now go from what would have been 200 million under the 90 percent to 240 million under the 93 percent. And that achieves what this body wanted to do and what the Governor has been presenting to the bond underwriters and rating agencies as being, this is the amount of money we are legally able to borrow. There may be some concern, most recent, Mr. Speaker, that we're doing something here that may upset the apple cart, that one of the comments made was, we may have to go back and make new presentations. Well, you know what we did, Mr. Speaker, is we took, we actually received a copy of the presentations that GITA made to these rating agencies to assure and get the A-grade rating. And nowhere in the presentation does it reference Chamorral Land Trust, nowhere does it reference rating, the debt limit, nowhere does it reference qualified opinions, none of these representations of what we're doing with this bill were part of the rating, the rating agency process. So, it really doesn't, I mean, unless they said something off the record, but what we do have is that the presentation for the rating, all it concentrated on was, what are we going to use to pay the debt service and the bonds? And that is, of course, not affected in any form or fashion in this. In addition, from all of the preliminary documents that GITA has drafted up, our Bond Council has drafted up, we really don't have any references to the debt limit, the Chamorral Land Trust on the assessment rolls, and none of that issue is raised. It's just, we certify that we're going to be able to borrow up to $240 million. And so, this achieves that, this keeps all of that intact, it doesn't change in any form or fashion, the way we're going to pay the debt, the structure of the issue at all, all of those remain intact. What it does is just removes the Chamorral Land Trust from the tax rolls, increases the assessment to 93 percent to allow us and achieve the borrowing of 240 million. And so, there was one note, Mr. Speaker, of concern that is, was raised by the Governor in their continued review on this, was that when they came to testify, of course, they opposed it. But they brought no problem other than we oppose it and we think it's going to affect our borrowing. Since then, they've obviously continued to review the bill, and they did catch, and we agree with them, that there was one error that was contained in the bill, which is the percentage of the assessment on the improvement of, I mean, on the land of the property. And so, what resulted was, when we did our calculation, we basically didn't complete the final step in converting to a percentage, so we didn't divide by 100 before we wrote the percentage in. So, when we completed that, as they pointed out, the percentage on the assessment on the land itself needs to be changed, Mr. Speaker, and I'd like to offer that amendment at this time. Let me just find it. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The amendment is contained in Section 4 of the bill, and that is, and that reads levy. And what it needs to do, Mr. Speaker, is to change the percentage there under Section 4, 24103 levy. The percentage needs to change from 175 slash 86 percent, oh, 186, and that needs to change to 35 slash 372 percent of the value. So, it just needs to change, and that would be the appropriate percentage to be assessed on the land side to ensure that the tax bill to the landowner remains the same when the property is assessed, at 90 versus 93 percent. And so, that would be the amendment I'm offering.
That's on line 5?
Line 5, correct. And the 35 slash 93 percent is correct, that doesn't need, does not need to be changed. Yes, so the only difference is?
The only amendment being proffered is on line 5, changing the 175 over 186 to 35 over 372, is that correct, Mr. Senator Panglienan?
That's correct.
Anybody wish to be heard on this amendment? Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you. I'm just, Mr. Speaker, I, you know, I remember when we were going through the discussions on the bond issue, it was just, there was just no moving on this 90 percent versus 93 percent or whatever. And so, as a result of the being adamant, the legislature being adamant to hold it at 90 percent, then the concession was made to come in and say, okay, well, then we'll put in the Chamorral Land Trust's properties so that then that will raise the value and that would get us the, that would get us to the $244 million that they wanted to go out and borrow. And I don't understand why now 93 percent is okay, you know, to basically go up to 93 percent of the total assessed land value. Why not 95? I mean, maybe next week, we should go up to 95. It's just, I'm concerned that now we've kind of broken the sanctity of that 90 percent which has been in place forever, and now it's, we've broken that, and I'm concerned that it's just going to set the precedent for, you know, the red meat freeing frenzy.
Is that a rhetorical question, or do you wish the sponsor to?
No, it's a rhetorical question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other Senator wish to be heard on the amendment? We're just on the amendment currently. Anybody else? You may close, Senator Panglienan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, number one, the 90 percent has not been in place forever. The original assessment was at one time at 35 percent, then it was changed to 70 percent, then it was changed to 90 percent. So, the statement that it's been in place forever is just pure and simply not correct. Secondly, Mr. Speaker, I certainly thought long and hard before changing and deciding to introduce this bill. And for me, it is, the overwhelming question was, the amount we're borrowing is the same amount, and so, I'm not allowing additional debt to be borrowed. It's how do we arrive at the amount that we're going to borrow? And for me, I'm sure I may eat a little crow on this, but it's, I'll eat crow all day if I can protect the Chamorral Land Trust. And yes, we thought that, and this body and myself, that how do we move past what we, where we were at? And we thought it was just going to be a smooth transition of just put the Chamorral Land Trust and we're okay, but it's not the case. Because I'm worried that, number one, putting the Chamorral Land Trust, an effect will have on opening up the Chamorral Land Trust to new challenges. That, to me, is worth, you know, a pound of crow to eat, is to be able to go out there and try to restore something that may have been unforeseen, that may not even be speculative at this time. It's not speculative that changing that exposes the Chamorral Land Trust to greater challenge. And it's not red meat because we're not adding anything, we're still serving the same, you know, hamburger. We're not adding any new debt, we're not allowing any new borrowing. So, that is the difference between 90 and 93 percent, is how do we account for that borrowing? How do we get to the legal limit of increasing our borrowing and protecting the Chamorral Land Trust at the same time? So, yes, 90 percent with Chamorral Land Trust is not acceptable. 93 percent without Chamorral Land Trust is acceptable to me because of the fact that it, for me, provides us an opportunity to shelter and shield the Chamorral Land Trust from any additional challenges that may, we may be opening up with that intention, with that action. And the fact that putting the Chamorral Land Trust's properties without clarifying them, without maps, without assessments, may not provide us the opportunity to achieve that $240 million borrowing that everybody had agreed to. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Is there an objection to the amendment? Seeing no objection to the amendment, amendment's adopted. On the main motion, any Senator wish to be heard on the main motion, the bill itself? Seeing no hands, Senator Panglienan, you may close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, once again, I rise, request for my colleagues' consideration after pointing out that we are achieving the same effect that we wanted to achieve by the inclusion of Chamorral Land Trust's properties in the tax rolls for the purpose of calculating the debt achievement, the debt calculation. And so, removing the Chamorral Land Trust, I believe, is a wise move, and maybe in hindsight is now wise, but it certainly allows us to address some of the concerns we have with the technical nature of trying to put these properties on there without adequate maps and adequate assessment, adequate tax bills, to be able to clearly and without an unequivocally certified $240 million in borrowing. Only those properties that are correctly placed on that tax rolls, meeting the requirement to be placed on the tax rolls, can be used to calculate that. And it's uncertain at this point whether or not Department of Revenue and Tax and the Guam Chamorral Land Trust can do that before we go to market. Secondly, I think is this issue of trying to restore the original enactment legislation of the Chamorral Land Trust to a form that has been litigated, has been challenged, has been upheld, to something new now, a change in it that may place it at risk to be challenged in the future. Thank you, and seduce Massey, and I hope for the support of the body.
Thank you very much. On the motion to place Bill 344 in the voting file, seven objections. Hearing and seeing no objection, Senator Panglienan, you're recognized on Bill 241.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move Bill 241-31, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, to the third reading file, and just explain it very briefly.
Standing objection? Seeing none, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this bill is made necessary because of the inability of Land Management and the Guam Land Use Commission to resolve outstanding issues with regards to Chamorral Land Trust property maps. At one time, the Chamorral Land Trust's property were surveyed, taken to Land Management, Land Management recorded those maps, and recipients of the property were able to go get water, power, even loans to build on the home, on the properties that they were given. And all of these surveys were done by licensed professional surveyors. The Guam Land Use Commission, Department of Land Management, then decided that they were not going to accept any of these maps because the original subdivision of these properties were done not through the Guam Land Use Commission, they were done through the Chamorral Land Trust's properties. And so, they began rejecting all of these maps, which placed all of these Chamorral Land Trust property recipients in limbo. Now, they couldn't get a tax, a payment in lieu of taxman bill, because they can't register the property and other issues resolved that. The water can't be hooked up, and power can't be hooked up, loans can't be, can't be closed because of the fact that these maps would not, were not recorded and not become official at Land Management. So, what this bill does, Mr. Speaker, is all of those properties that have been subdivided by the Chamorral Land Trust, issued leases and licenses to eligible recipients that have had those maps done by professional engineers, would be now deemed to be approved, and in order to get them approved and registered at Land Management and recorded, that they would need to then submit into Department of Land Management. They would review the maps themselves to make sure that they conform to regularly recordable maps. And then, these individuals who have these properties can now go and get water, get power, get loans, and begin utilizing their properties without any hindrances. What this also bill does is, in order to ensure that we at least do a little bit more planning for the subdivision of Chamorral Land Trust's properties, we're now requiring that any new subdivisions to be parceled out by the Chamorral Land Trust needs to be submitted to the Guam Land Use Commission so that we go through that regular process and have the professional review done on the subdivision of future subdivisions of the Chamorral Land Trust. So, it approves all of those maps that have been done by professional engineers that Land Management in the past have refused, to now make them recordable and record it, and requires all future subdivisions to go through the regular subdivision process review, Mr. Speaker. And so, this would allow many of our Land Trust recipients to begin to utilize the property and get the needed infrastructure in there to support their families and their activities on properties that have been given to them by the Chamorral Land Trust. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglienan. On Senator Ada, any others wish to be heard on this bill? Senator Duennas after Senator Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was reading the committee report over lunchtime, and I, it was in the testimony by the Department of Land Management, they, I guess they said they really object to the bill, but they've provided amendments to the bill to try and, I guess, mitigate, I guess, try and tighten it as best as they see as a, as land professionals, but I guess, in principle, they really don't agree with the, basically exempting these maps. Now, I noticed that in the bill, there was some, some of the amendments that was proffered by the Department of Land Management were incorporated, but then others weren't. And of course, the Land Management in their testimony indicated that these, I guess, the proper term- the proper term to, to describe these documents that were being approved by the Chamorah Land Trust Commission was that they were sketches. They were not maps. I guess maps take on certain definitions, but really they were just sketches. And land management was concerned that the last time that we did something like this with the Chamorah Land Trust properties, where we kind of like pulled out the stops, that was when a lot of the problems started, where you have overlapping boundaries, encroachments, and their concern is that once landowner, once the people get on the land and either start building, it's, it's really going to be very difficult to rectify that situation, especially if you have a building that's, that's straddling property lines and whatnot. You're not going to have them tear it down so that you can move it over five feet. And so they, they really have some real concerns about this. Now, I, I guess land management is basically saying, okay, fine, you're going to do what you want to do anyway, so let me make a few amendments here and hopefully we can, you know, tighten things up a little bit. And along with that, then, I, I really would, one of the amendments that they, that they, that they proposed was that we really set off a, a cutoff date as to these, you know, sketches that will be basically just grandfathered in and given the blessing from the legislature. Never mind the reviews from land management or whatever. Whatever land, Chamorah Land Trust Commission has signed off on, that's, that's going to be what it is. But they asked that, you know, everything up to 2007, that'll be the cutoff deadline. Anything beyond that is then really should be, should, we put it back on track and it should go through the proper review procedures. But I noticed that there's, there's nothing in here to that extent, and I guess that would go on page three, somewhere there on paragraph 3B, starting on line eight. It just simply says that any Chamorah Land Trust leased maps prepared and signed by a professional land surveyor and approved by Chamorah Land Trust are hereby deemed approved. So I guess conceivably, one could then interpret that, that since laws are, are applied prospectively, that anything from November 2011 back and earlier, all those sketches will now be approved without having had to go through the scrutiny of Department of Land Management and the Guam Land Use Commission. So that is one, that is one amendment that, that the, that the Department of Land Management had requested be made in their testimony. In, in the, on, on paragraph 3C, it seems that, I, I don't, I don't quite understand if it's good enough, you know, if what has been done is good enough for the Chamorah Land Trust, well then, why do we need paragraph C and say, you know, we've already set the precedent? So we're saying, if you're Chamorah Land Trust property, you don't need to go through, through the Department of Land Management, you don't need to go to the Guam Land Use Commission if we're talking about subdivisions. So hey, from this point forward, have at it. So, you know, so if we're setting the precedent now, then, then I say, let's let them go. And, and, and I'm sure that, that things will work out. And then I noticed, of course, that on paragraph 3C, in the land management made it very clear that I guess the, they wanted, on page two there, line 22, I guess the change was made there regarding the property subdivision that should go through the Guam Land Use Commission, that it should be, I, I guess originally that was six or more lots. And they suggested, well, change that to two or more lots. So in other words, two lots, it has to go, two lots or more, it has to go through Chamorah, to the Guam Land Use Commission. And, and it was, I, I guess that was changed here on page two, line 22. But I noticed that on paragraph 3C, we're still going back to the application for subdivisions of six or more lots. So I didn't get a chance to, to actually review Article 2, Chapter 62 of Title 21 to see, in fact, did it require that it was six lots or more to be subdivided, needed to come in to the, to the Guam Land Use Commission or what? So I, I'm just a little confused as to that case. But, you know, I, I'm serious about if it's, if we're willing to take that step now to say, never mind, in the case of Chamorah Land Trust property, never mind scrutiny by the Department of Land Management or the Guam Land Use Commission, then I think that should hold from this point forward. So my motion is to then delete paragraph 3C, which is on line 11 through 14 on page three. Thank you.
The add amendment is to remove 3C on page three. On that amendment, anybody wish to be heard? Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I certainly stand in support of the amendment, even though I know it's not being presented in good faith, I think. But that's okay.
Wait, wait a minute. I, I take personal privilege to that. I did present the amendment in good faith. And for him to say that I did not present it in good faith, I believe is a cheap shot.
Thank you, and point well taken, Senator Ada, Senator Pangolinan.
You know, Mr. Speaker, if, if, if it's precedent, then why are we reversing tax exemptions? That's precedent too for allowing tax exemptions. That's what I mean, Mr. Speaker. But let me, let me just say, Mr. Speaker, of why we put that in there. The reason why we need to approve these maps now is because when we didn't start, we have handed out 2,000 lots. And so to reverse that and take back all of those lots right now will be just utterly chaotic. So we wanted to make sure that those lots where we did not go through the benefit and the review of the land professionals with regards to the subdivision of the property, but there was thought put into the subdivision. And what we're doing is that we are requiring these company, these individuals to get professional surveys on their lot. There are not, the, the reference term to sketches is, is, is something that, there was, those are referred to, but there were actual survey done by licensed surveyors. And that's why they've been referred to that, and that's why we say, take those sketches now, redraw them if you have to, make sure they comply with applicable professional survey requirements. What is required to be a map that is accurate and, and recordable, if they were not originally in that fashion and that format, then they have to be redone so that we can record them at land management and we'll resolve the overlapping issues and cross boundary lines. That's why that section is there. Because of the fact that we decided, this body and, and this government decided that we were just going to hand out these lots, we're now trying to resolve that and make sure that all of those lots, by the time we give them to the landowners, will at least have been surveyed professionally and some issues resolved with regards to easements and boundaries. And the reason why we're saying, let us now ensure that when we subdivide future lots, that we go through the land planning and land use process so that we avoid having to do this. We avoid having to go back and say, let's approve these lots who have at least been reviewed, redrawn, and meet all the requirements of what is needed in order to ensure that we can record them and everybody knows what their boundary is in. So that's why that section is there of requiring them so that we avoid the problem we're facing by having to do a legislative fix in the future. And if we don't want to do that, that's fine with me, I'll support it. But I'm just telling you that it is to avoid what we're having to do today with this bill is the reason why we're saying all future subdivisions. And I apologize because the author is correct. The appropriate benchmark for requiring them to be reviewed by the Guam Land Use Commission is six lots. So that where we have on page two, under legislative intent, where we say two lots, that was something that came out of, of another bill, I'm sure. I, I apologize of that requirement. But chapter, Article 2, Chapter 62, Title 12, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and, and I may be subject to correction and I'll stand corrected, but I do believe that any subdivision of six or more lot is what is required to be approved and go through the review process of the Guam Land Use Commission. So Section C in that respect is, I think, correct in referring to a subdivision of six or more lots, shall comply with the provisions of Article 2 and so forth. Now, again, if, maybe now is the, maybe we can throw this section out because now Chamorah Land Trust is under land management and, and who knows what they're able to work with synergy there. But again, the idea was that we avoid the mistakes of the past by putting all subdivision of new lots to the review process of the Land Use Commission so that we don't have to be doing this and finding ourselves once again having to provide a legislative fix where if, if we had allowed them to go through the normal process since the very beginning, then we won't have these problems. So, but if that's the, the, if that's my colleague's intention to help the Chamorah Land Trust, I'm not going to stand in his way.
On the add amendment striking, deleting subsection C on page three, are there any other senators who wish to be heard? Is there an objection to the deletion of subsection C? Hearing and seeing no objection. On the main motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Ada, did you have anything else? Senator Duñez is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to provide commentary on Bill 241. Mr. Speaker, I join the good Senator from Higalau in his not only reading of the committee report, but his concerns as expressed. You know, Mr. Speaker, for the short time that I had at land management, for a year and a half, dealing with these issues of the sketches or check prints, if you will, on issuances of leases and license for Chamorah Land Trust, took up over 50% of my time, working with the land planning division, various mayors, whoever was involved, Mr. Speaker. And you can resolve these issues. They're not unresolvable. But I join land management's opposition because the reason is, upon discovery after discovery, to include fixing problems where there are already structures, Mr. Speaker, on those lots that have been issued, construction has commenced, I've seen lines going right through the middle of the home. Mr. Speaker, in a number of incidences, the reason why the utilities themselves are so adamant is because in a number of cases, you have roads that would make San Francisco, that would be in competition with some roads in San Francisco. So I have a great deal of concern with this bill. And I will say, the retiring speaker from Baragada was correct in terms of what currently exists now. One of the findings of the multi-agency task force that was convened by the former administration to try to deal with the number of issues under CLTC and the management of such properties and leases and licenses, was the very recommendation of the consolidation and to then have the Guam Land Use Commission go forward and take all of those proposed subdivisions and apply the same principles, the same infrastructure requirements, all the way through, from two, six lots, all the way up, to include mandating infrastructure improvements and requirements so you could use the property in such a more efficient way, by allowing, by allowing for, for lot sizes that don't need to be a half acre on requirements of septic systems and leaching fields. So, Mr. Speaker, I, I rise in opposition, I cannot support this legislation, on the basis of these issues are resolvable. What we should really be concentrating on is getting those rules and regulations completed and the collection of funds on the current leases and licenses under commercial so that we can fund. And you could still use the sketches that exist and the check prints that exist. In fact, like I said, you could walk through the process on correcting this, but sometimes you need Guam Power, Guam Water, everybody else to come in because to correct the problem is not sometimes simply an encroachment on a lot. It's a, it's, it's a right of way. It's an infrastructure easement. So the real solution is for land management to, once and for all, put out an RFP, get a consortium or whoever wins the, the bid, and take on face value all the good faith effort and the work and yes, the survey work that was done that is currently a check print, just like you and I would go and have something approved, and finish it. But to do this in this manner, I think, will be very problematic, very difficult for land management, and also, I think, just raise the hopes of those who have legitimate issues in terms of getting that final piece of paper to, to, to realize their dream, but yet cause a lot of havoc in the meantime and probably long lines up at land management like we saw up in Sinojia today, only to realize that this is a bigger mess than it appears on its face value. So, Mr. Speaker, I, I thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns on this piece of legislation, 241. Sidus Massey.
Thank you. Any other senators wish to be heard on the main motion of Bill 241? Any other senators wish to be heard on Bill 241? If not, Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I do want to acknowledge that the solution being proposed here is not the ideal solution. The ideal solution, I guess, is to kick everybody off their lots right now and grab it all back and reconsolidate, but you can't do that. And, and if that's the solution that you think is correct, then introduce a bill to do that. But I'm telling you that you can't, it's just impossible to do that at this time. And the subdivision of these lots were, are, were not as haphazard as we are making it sound. What we're doing is, so land management accepted some maps, accepted quite a number of maps. It's just that arbitrarily, they put in and say, we're not going to accept them anymore. We're not going to accept your lot, which is a budding, a map that I just approved last year for the other guy, your neighbor. We're not going to accept your map, but your neighbor, all around you have had their maps accepted. And our solution is now to kick all of those guys up to solve one problem? Is that the solution? To kick 20 people off their lots? Because land management will not approve the one map that's in that 20, in that group of 20. It's not like they haven't approved anything. So the solution is, we accepted those 20 maps, there's one guy right in the middle, and land management said, from this day forward, we're not going to approve your map. And the guy wants to get water, wants to get power because his neighbor has one, and they can't because the map's not recorded. they can't because the map's not recorded, GWA won't allow them. I just dealt with that issue a couple of days ago. The guy comes in and he can't do it because the map's not approved, but his neighbor has water and power. His neighbor, not 20 miles away, not in Talafoco, next door. And the issue is a recording of a map that's been done by a professional surveyor, and it was arbitrary when land management decided to cut off the recording and the acceptance for the recording of these maps. Not because of problems, they just said, "It didn't go through the GLUC, so we're not going to approve it." Not that there's a mistake in the calculation, not that there's an encroachment, we're just not going to do it because it didn't go through here after this day. That's the arbitrariness of what we have here. Esti gi problema guin ni. Ga gi bisin una estama preba ma paon ya. Guaha nom ya, guanu zonya power. Zapu di leng ya land management basta zu ma accepta esti. Paogu gua ni, an motzu ni gamun ni motzu molomu, pona preba. Lo paogu ne esti gi paogu ni ga gi, ti sinya ma preba. Lo toodu dui bisin ustaman ma preba. Zai leleka guin ni na, oh no, 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 ti ta geno ni petafa maulik. Dula la ki bisin umu toodu duh ni ustaman ma preba. Zata saba haogu, zatan reconsolidate, zan reconfigure? Tai manu no napo mos maulik. Tileleku na apreba i baba. Sa leng ya ga gi guin ni lokui na matugia na apreba edzi mamidi, ni professional na agreement so. Za makatkula toodu duh, za dinansi, i zonya point, dinansi, i zonya calculation, dinansi i ma deleterenya. Za sinya ma accepta. Edgi, sinya ma preba. Tileleku na ma preba i zi ma droi nga kita tinapkin, zo molomu, zo na luxulis ti paogu. Lileku na tai manu ni sinya tan, ka adudai tautauta, ni man man nananga gi uzung paogu pofan ma preba ma paon ya, za sinya manasetbi, itano ni tanoi. Za ta zan na resona na ti malagu sa ti malaguay land management, sa ti mo, ti ma, sa miti guatu contra Guam Land Use Commission. Lo ma dibidi, hungan guaha sempui, problema lo ti, ti, ti para ta saba si na klasen problema. Para ta di roga paogu i zi dos mid, otusentus na tonu ni tanoi she pu malu, za ta zan problema niya, sa para ta leglasti, esti gi. An eno leleku na tai manu ta zo gui, pos manu ta, ta spiya zata debatu, eno, na enigi, malago ta para ta zo gui. Lo gua leleku, angin dinansi i ma pa, angin esta ga gi naman ma preba she pu malu ni bisin umu. Hafo na ti sinya ma preba ma paon mu, za sinyon usai tanu, za sinyon na holum i kandit zani hanu. Hafo na haogua paogu pudi atu laika na sonya land management? Zaleleku, hungan no talina problema si zani sita ta farhat misti olum, ginin hita guin ni gi magod, i mos dinansi ti, ti tafa nimba guin ni, lo nasisi, anisisi ta na hita ta zo gui si, sa timan malagu i zi si ati mo gui zatunya. Zuleleka na, tanasiguru na ti taripiti esti na, na inkubekau, za para paogu mo na angipata subdivision, itano itamoru land trust, maila zata usa i hafo ga gi uzung paogu ni po ginias ti, zo nasiguru na dinansi mo na ma bidon ya, zamaela zata presentza zasiya uin atan, para paogu mo na pudno tabirai takti guin ni gi. Ta fafa na paogu ni nisisi ta, ta fanentalu zata saba si na klasen problema. Edzo ogogo. Tileleku na para disti paogu mo na lo, enigi mina lagu esti i man ga zo guin ni, pos manu zeno ta zo gui zata na, ta pe, ta peleid paogu na, edzi man ga gi gui u ma zo gui Masia ti ta, na fit mi na nisisi ta u ma zo gui zi, pudi, pudi matuwa na, ti ta zo gui zi, ta ripiti si siya, zatiya nomi na la go ta para ta adudai tautauta tautauta. Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. On the motion to place 241 in the voting file, is there an objection? Seeing none. Senator Pangoline, you're recognized on 297.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 297 is a bill that would rezone the property fronting Route Four, almost across from the Addus Funeral Home, to be rezoned to a commercial zone. The property is along the major thoroughfare of Route Four. It is compatible in terms of commercial use with existing properties. Up the street is a tire shop, across the hall is, of course, a funeral home, and other, less than a half a mile away is a small mini shopping center. The purpose for the change in the zoning is to allow one of the local physicians to construct a medical facility, a hemodialysis treatment center in the central part of Guam to service the many needs of our diabetic patients for hemodialysis services. And so this bill, Mr. Speaker, would do that, quite simply, and I ask for the support of the body. And I move that the bill be placed in the third reading file.
On the main motion, Senator Tom Adda.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Earlier, I know that we have in our standing rules, I guess, when we deal with rezoning and whatnot, there needs to be, we really should make available the maps. But I spoke with the author of the bill earlier, and he indicated that the property is the one across from, I guess, across the street from the Addus Funeral Home there as you're going down the hill. Although I'm not certain, is that just one big lot? Is that the one lot? Or are there several lots there that's in that area that's being carved out? And so it's not clear, you know, if that is the case, which lot is being rezoned. So maybe if the author of the bill can help clarify, just, you know, that, because we don't have the benefit of a map.
Thank you. Do you yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the committee report was filed. It might be uploaded, but we did file the committee report with the maps inclusive in the committee report. It may not be in the possession of, on the floor at this time, but we did.
We'll take a minute, and we'll get a map. A map has been distributed. Does that satisfy your question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. It shows very clearly that it's really the large piece there that's being carved out that's being rezoned. So that, I mean, that answers my question.
Thank you. On the main motion, any other senators wish to be heard? On the main motion, on 297, any senators wish to be heard? Seeing no hands. Senator Pangoline, you may close. On the motion placed 297 in the voting file, seeing no objection, 235, Senator Munia Barnes. Has everybody received a copy of the amendments being proffered by Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to work on this bill, to strengthen it, and to also address the concerns that some of my colleagues may have had. So portions, this amendment that has been passed out is, Section Two of this bill, 235 COR, is amended to read, and the First Amendment there would be, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the governors hereby authorized to transfer to the government of Guam properties described below to Gura for the use of affordable housing, temporary emergency shelters, or to house non-governmental organizations duly registered with the Department of Revenue and Taxation as a nonprofit organization. And then it continues on with the breakdown of the Agatha housing, Talafoco, Dedido, Jigo, and Maritza.
Do you wish to speak on your amendment?
As noted earlier, Mr. Speaker, again, as we look at giving Gura the authority to rehab these houses, they've got the grants necessary so that we can get these houses fixed, so that our families within the community who qualify to receive affordable housing and to get them into this housing and realize that the quality of life for their children will, and their families will be better. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will support my amendment, but to also support the main motion.
Thank you very much. On the Munia Barnes amendment, Senator Tom Adda, then Senator Ben Pangoline.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just, if the author of the amendment would yield, I'm just curious, she indicated that the Gura has federal funds available to renovate these houses, which can then be used for, I guess, rented out as affordable housing. I'm just, I'm sorry? Public housing, yes, yes. I'm just curious, though, if, is this same pot of money available to, let's say, build a community center in Talafoco where these homes, as opposed to, which then will have a far, far more reaching impact in comparison to maybe using that same amount of money to renovate, I don't know, 10 houses, 15 houses, that would benefit 15 families? So if, maybe she can help to clarify that.
Mr. Speaker, yes, I will yield to the question. Thank you very much. And according to the executive director from Gura, he says that that funding capability could be utilized for the inquiry that he just asked for. So yes, the answer is yes.
So these are CDBG grants? Senator Adda, you still have the floor.
Thank you. And so I wonder if, I wonder if the village mayors were even aware of that? Because I, you know, we often hear, I know that the mayor from Talafoco has always talked about, hey, we need a community center, we need, we need, you know, community facilities. So I'm wondering, were they even aware of that?
Yes.
Being available?
Yes, he was, Mr. Speaker. We have been in communication with the Talafoco mayor in reference to whether he wanted to turn this into a community venue for his residents or to housing, and he said that if Gura can rehab these houses so that we could get people into these residents, into that housing area, that would be good. He'd rather that something be done than to see it in that deplorable state. So yes, the, when it comes to the mayor of Talafoco, he was informed, and we have been in communication.
And if I may inquire, was that the same position of the mayor from Agit, the mayor from Dedido, and the mayor from Jigo, and the mayor from Maritzo?
Do you yield?
Yes, I would yield, yes. But, but you know, Mr. Speaker, depending on the emergency need of what happens within the villages, what may be good today may not be good tomorrow, may, what may not have been good today is, I mean, yesterday may be good for today. And in the efforts of working together, as also as oversight of mayor, they felt that this, to fix these houses up, to make these houses livable again, was something that they thought would be positive for their villages, instead of having it at its deplorable stage, which is right now, and that risky behaviors have been happening because those houses are being utilized by a lot of other folks that shouldn't be there to begin with.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. But I'm not, I'm not sure if that was, the answer was yes, the respective mayor says.
I said, yes, they were, they have been.
So, so an announcement was made that X millions of dollars was available in CDBG grants, and applications were sought to receive.
If you're asking for a formal letter to each of the mayors?
No, 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 not a formal letter. There's always a grant announcement of CDBG grants.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure the mayors were given due notice that there was this, you know, there's these funds available for that possible use versus a, what's being proposed here in the bill. Thank you very much.
On the, on the main motion, any other senators wish to be heard? Senator Ben Pangolin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I certainly logged the intention, and in the end, maybe the outcome of this bill, but, you know, what I thought would be a better solution, or another idea and another approach to how we can rehabilitate these homes is, I still think that these properties really rightfully belong in the Chamor Land Trust, that they shall be, that they are in the inventory of the Chamor Land Trust at this time. And so, doing this means we're now taking out Chamor Land Trust property, if I'm not mistaken, but I, and I could be, and I, to give to GURA to make them available for other When we started out, we said we wanted to do this because we had this money to rehabilitate these homes and put people in them. And what I thought would be is, you know, the best way to lift somebody out of poverty is homeownership, and Chamor Land Trust property would be, in all intents purposes, ownership 99 years. And we know that if you find an applicant that meets the requirements of GURA, that individual can qualify for a home rehabilitation loan. So I thought that what would, should occur is that these properties should just be given out to qualified applicants of the Chamor Land Trust. I mean, that's what the mayor of Talafofu suggested during the hearing, that rather than giving the property to GURA, give it to Chamor Land Trust, have Chamor Land Trust then give these properties out, because they already have infrastructure, they have water, power, in most cases sewer, and all they needed is somebody to live in them and take care of them. And if we were to just rehabilitate them so we make more public housing available, we're not making a dent in the poverty as envisioned by increasing public housing requirements. If we put him in the Chamor Land Trust, give him to an eligible Chamor family, he now then can go to GURA, who qualifies for the GURA rehabilitation loan, and you put him in a home that he's there, he takes care of it, the property is well taken care of, because now they're there, they own it, they have water, they have power, they have sewer, they have paved roads. So that would be the approach that I thought we would take on this thing, but if it's the will of the body that we give it over to GURA to continue public housing program, you know, I just think a more beneficial use could be putting people in a position of homeownership versus renting homes through subsidized government housing. And so, while I may not, I won't object, I wish I could, but, you know, because I think this could have a good benefit. But I think, I believe this property is in the Chamor Land Trust, and I think that we could easily find Chamor Land Trust recipients who qualify for the programs that GURA will use to rehabilitate these homes. We know because they've been able to do that in some instances. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolin. Any other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? I mean, on the amendment, no, the amendment was approved, on the main motion.
Can we just, if you don't, on the amendment, can we change sha, may to shao on the middle part where it says, "The board of Aturaduhun, Gima, I, Rinueban, Ciodat, Guahan, may repartial, change that to shao repartial the laws described below to contain only those areas which the staff housing is currently erected."
Any objection to the reconsideration?
No objection.
Anything else on this bill, 235? On the motion to add, the speaker is the third co-sponsor. No objection. Any, anybody else? On the motion to place the bill in the voting file? No objection. Senator Rodriguez, we're back on 344, I mean, 339.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and hopefully we get this now. I was speaking with Senator Blaz, I think we squared away what the confusion was. I'd like to offer this amendment on page 66, on line 7. After the word "Office of EMS," we strike out for the specific use for the establishment of the division of EMS and add, also, Office of EMS, comma, under DPHSS, which that office falls under. And I think that would clear up the confusion as to why we're having two separate offices or divisions that are being created with this legislation.
Is that amendment clear with everyone? Anybody wish to speak on the amendment?
66.
66. You'll have to work with the clerks on writing that amendment down, please, because. Anyone wish to speak on the Rodriguez amendment? Seeing no hands go up, is there an objection to the Rodriguez amendment on page 66? Any other amendment, Senator Rodriguez?
That's all, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
On the main motion? Any senators wish to be heard on the, on the main motion? You may close. On the motion to send the bill down to voting file? Seeing no objection. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Your Honor, I move that we, having exhausted all the business in the second reading file, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recess until 4:00 tomorrow to give the legal counsel and the clerk and our staff enough time to engross these bills.
Thank you. Hearing no objection to that motion, we're recessed until 4:00 tomorrow afternoon.
About 3:00.
3:00 tomorrow afternoon for the vote.